Please rise for the pledge. Councilor Schleibach will lead us this evening.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I do what you call offer? Councilor Lawrence?
Here.
Councilor Schleibach?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
Councilor Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Say.
Councilor Schleibach?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Lawrence?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to proclamations, communications, and appointments, we have Peggy Shaw.
Peggy's in here.
Okay.
She's in Denver, helping her daughter get her classroom prepared for the, for big next year. And as vice president of Modest Historical Society. Now is the time?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what we'd like to do is request funding to help us put a new roof on the little block building by the library. Our original library of Modest built in 1895 needs a roof, imagine that. We have a, a, right now, the inspection in April showed that there were cracks on the north and, and south side of the existing roof, which was put on by torch, it was kind of a tar fight stuff. And we continue, two years ago, we had it patched, last spring, we had it patched. And this is a continuing process. And the other options were a black rubber membrane roofing material, a pro panel metal roof, or the existing roof material to continue patching it, which we're trying to say, okay, what's going to fix it? For good. That little building contains unbelievable amount of historical documentation. And no place else in our little town do we have those records. We've got photographs, we've got documents, we've got, well, if you've not been there, you'd be a standard of the amount of material we've got there. So it needs to be preserved and protected. The estimate on that huge building, the material for a pro panel roof would be $720, a labor on it would be $380, and a pro panel would be $50, with a total of $1,150 for the complete job. And we are looking for funding, we have not yet, we, we put out a Facebook last, and we did get a $100 donation from a, a member. And we haven't received anything else yet in the last month. So, um, we will proceed from there after we find out whether or not this is approved by the city. Is there, do you think that's you need? I've got a copy of this, do you need a copy of the, the estimate or anything?
I, yeah, I, I would think Rob would probably want a copy of it. So I know we're going into our budget cycle now for this coming year, is that something possible? Was there a timeframe you were looking at? Were you wanting to do it before winter?
Well, with the rain today, the sooner the better, yeah. We, we truly do need to get this done before winter, before snow sits on there. Again, stone building, and it, the stone seems to, I don't know, it, it's not very good at deflecting the moisture at all.
Is that something we even have available funds for at this time, or would we have to put it on?
I, I think, Madam Mayor, that if it was the council's desire, and it's not an incredibly large amount of money, that we could find a way to make that contribution.
How much council funds do you have left at this point, do we have any?
Yeah, you do have, I'm gonna just off the top of my head, at least $750. But there also was some additional funds from not going to CML. I can't remember the exact tally, but I would say between some council funds and some other funds we have, that we could find a way to do that.
You're, you're saying put the entire bill, or just make a contribution?
I would say it's up to the council's discretion, if you wanted to make a donation to that, $250 or $500, certainly that's within the council's budget, and we can certainly cover that.
Will she be counsel?
Make motion to donate $500 from council funds to the repair of the Historical Society roof?
Say.
Any other discussion? Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilor Schleibach?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much, you certainly appreciate it. We are, we are on the shoestring budget, I mean, the only money we have every year is our membership fees and, our furnace went out last year, and we had somebody actually donate the repairs on that, and so we continue to put band-aids on things. I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that a city building, or is it? The little...
I don't think that that building is actually the city's.
Who does it belong to then?
I think it belongs to...
What, the building?
Yeah, the, the Historical Society, right there, right next to you, yeah.
Right, the library of the...
The library.
Library.
That was given to the library, but the owner, the original owner, they put it back in there.
I think the remaining funding can probably be gained from community volunteer organizations like Rotary. I'm gonna make a contribution myself on the tour, because that building is very important to the historical development of the city of Modest. Yeah, you think if they came to Rotary, that Jean and I are both members, we certainly would support Rotary making a donation.
So Jean, will you reach out to her and just suggest that she come, is it working?
Cool.
All right. Moving on to citizens' comments and special presentations, we have Judy Allen and Tila Louise Martinez here to talk about the tennis courts.
Thank you, my name is Judy Allen, and I've been playing tennis here in Modest, I think of Modest as a tennis town, since about 1984, that's a long time. And we organized a league back in those days, I was actually just a player, I didn't organize it. But that league still continues today. We were on, the prior courts used to be just to the west of where it could golf course, one of their maintenance buildings, or the building there, you can still see the remnants of that court, those two courts. But then they moved it to the current location, because I guess there had been a swimming pool there at one time, so they just couldn't get a good court surface to hold it up. And the city of Modest sort of put those courts in, in the pipe and mid 90s, the ones that are there now, and they were put in by a company by, I believe their name was Mallett, Rander, Peterson. They were out of Denver, and they were very top-notch courts, they're the same people that put in the courts in Elmoza and the park there, Herald Park, a couple of years prior to when they came down here and did Modest. And through the years, they, they, I believe have been resurfaced once, maybe are completely surfacing. But in the last probably five to 10 years, they have been patched, and probably to the, the best they could have been. But now the patch has pulled away, and there's pretty large cracks there, and they are not really safe, they're not real playable. We still play there, there are three leagues that meet there on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we are very grateful to the city, because we've been able to play there for so many years. And these are women's leagues, if the men want to start one, you can do that. But, but we appreciate it, and they are very well maintained, the weeds are kept up, they're, they're, I, I think they're powder washed, and nice wind screens. We do appreciate it very much, but they do need to be resurfaced. If they were just patched the way they were ten, five, 10 years ago, they won't hold up. And I think you could, or we could help you look up, or find some, some places that could do it reasonably, but yet, that's gonna last, and get good, um, courts and surfaces that are gonna hold up at least four, 10 years and more. So, that's what I wanted to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so I'll take, we, we don't know exactly what the estimate would be at this point, or have you estimated it?
Uh, no, we have not, we just, this is just a starting point for us, and we do have names that are on this petition. There's about 20, between 25 and 30 names that are on, that are transplanted, as well as their contact information, phone numbers. But, no, we, we just suggested in our letter that possibly GoCo would be a part of it. But we, we don't know what all you all have, or what consider, so this is just kind of a starting point.
I haven't done any research for council to, to look at absolutely resurfacing them. There are, I do know of a few companies that do do that. What Mrs. Allen was saying is true, the cracks are fairly large. So we'd have to go in there and figure out the company somewhere to mitigate those, because if we just overlay over those, those cracks will re-surface themselves. So we'll have to try to figure out how to re-mitigate that, and then do another thing. I did, Dr. Howard, he, he had approached me last year on that, and we had put some money in to do some more of the patch type stuff. We really didn't really quite get through, so, budget last year. But it's something that you guys are likely to be willing to go through and do that. Even though your husband told me to give you a tissue today, and say he was gonna put a request in next week for a snow cone facility. Give him the business tonight when he gets home. No, but I'd be more than happy to do that.
Since we're kind of approaching the end of the summer, this is definitely something that we could bid out and get some cost, and put into our budget.
And I do believe that it would be an eligible expense through a GoCo grant.
And what does our special look like on GoCo, because I know we've got one now.
October is the budget.
Um, yeah, and I think if...
But do we have somebody using the October deadline?
Yeah, I think there was, there was a request.
Well, um, the application actually opened in August, drafts October 20th, final in November. I'm not aware of directly any proposals that have been made to the council, we still have a bike park out there, which I actually got the document for that last week, which is kind of cool to look at. But I don't know that we have any formal requests for the next cycle. We, you know, have our current project, which, you know, is a memorial park. But I'm not aware of any actual requests this time could have been made.
Yeah, and we're...
So we have at least one request now.
And, and is that something that your club would be willing to do, is to put together that grant proposal for October?
Yes, Dr. Howard, that Rob was talking, who Rob was talking about, has actually done this before. And I think that's when it was probably resurfaced, and that was probably 12 to 15 years ago.
Yeah, because we know Rob and his crew are very stretched and overworked most days. So if, if there's definitely somebody from your committee that could work, do the actual grant proposal, and we could act as a pass through in that October grant cycle. We could get with that then, and just kind of...
And I can also send you guys the copy of the Payton Blue Memorial Park Grant that we just got ordered this last year, so you can kind of use that as a guideline as you go through the grant process.
We'll hope you can explain, Erica?
And they are played with year-round, and that's not to put any hurry or rush on it. But I want you to know how used they are. And your lock system that you have on there is really nice. And you do give people numbers if they don't, you know, if they're passing through and they want to play. But it really keeps the, the courts in better shape. Our ones in Elmoza have had some replacement that's been, you know, uneditioned and happened, and mostly because they're always open, so. And also the high school uses them for TV.
Well, thank you ladies for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, from the council, that was quick. Well, we'll just start with workshops as a reminder. We will have a golf course and marijuana workshop on next Monday, August 8th at 6:00 PM. And then August 16th, we have workshop planned for preliminary budget work. So a busy month for the council. Included in your packet are a number of items, the police chief recruiting process has begun. We selected a consultant that we previously selected for that purpose. Advertisements are out now nationally. That process had run through probably late September, early October at the latest. You know, and there is kind of a schedule that's in your packet, as proposed by the recruiter. And essentially, there'll be, once it gets narrowed down to a small amount of finalists, there'll be a lot of interaction here at the city, opportunity for the council to meet all the applicants. We'll have citizen and professional panels, as well as an opportunity for law enforcement members to meet these candidates as well. Pretty prescriptive process, we do anticipate getting a high number of applications, which will be processed by the recruiter. I did throw something in the packet, I, I thought the council had at some point, maybe off and on, talked about remote meeting participation as a possibility. Don't know if that's something you're particularly interested in, but I did include a resolution from, escapes me now where it's from.
Manatee Springs.
Manatee Springs, thank you. Which they recently passed this, and there's quite a few in the CML listserv world, there's quite a few municipalities are looking at this. Kind of an item of interest for you if you wish to pursue it, or think about it, if it's something that you're interested in, certainly. Sidney, Attorney and I could work to draft a resolution to that effect. I think that's pretty much it, I had a piece on the potential GoCo grant, and we just had some people to talk with about that. And I think unless you have any other questions for me, that's all I have. Oh, let me add one more thing, so you don't have reports for recreation or kids connection tonight? Those are normally scheduled for this meeting, but with the Stampede activities that recreation's involved in, and then kids connection's actually on hiatus right now, so you'll get reports from them at the next meeting. But they, you know, they both asked about it, but they were pretty jammed up, Anika's actually on vacation this week, a well-deserved vacation. And then she'll be back next week, and they'll start planning for the fall. And within that, we have worked with the school district on the kids connection shared space, and that seems to be going okay at this point. We've met, I met with Anika and superintendent, and some of the other staff, and I believe it's all gotten worked out. It's gonna be cozy, but I think it'll work for a couple of months. And with that, that's all I have.
I did have one question, and Attorney Barish may want to weigh in on this as well. Is it really necessary to, I mean, there's nothing in the, in the city ordinance right now forbidding remote participation, is there? Is it really necessary to add something into the ordinance to allow it?
No, I'll throw my opinion, if you want to.
Okay, and we're talking about bidding for...
No, we're talking about remote participation in council meetings. Right now, we don't provide for that, and I would think that to legally constitute votes and things like that, that's why these other municipalities are doing it.
Sure. Oh, okay, so remote participation being from...
So if a council member wanted to call in from...
Call in. Well, um, you know, I guess we're talking about presence, and we're talking about what that means at council meetings. Because if you're going to, if you're going to be part of the council meeting, the way the rules are structured right now is that presence means presence here. Because if you start into that area, I think you're talking about can you be present for other things as well, probably. And I don't think our rules really envision that right now. I think you, you really need to be physically present at the meeting, because there's, there's too much interaction that goes on with the meetings that remote, that's a slippery slope, I mean, put it that way.
Well, I do think in Manatee Springs, for instance, they said that the council determines their remote participation is not appropriate for quasi judicial matters.
Right.
Or executive sessions. So they've really limited it to general meeting participation. And then also said, hey, if the video doesn't work, sorry. You know, if the audio or video or whatever doesn't work, the, the council's not beholden to go to extraordinary efforts to make that happen. So, you know, if that's something you're interested in.
Well, it might, if you're, if you're really interested in it, I think we ought to probably consider some, some procedural changes, probably that we enact actually, to make that. Because you can get down to the situation where, you know, you're in a bidding situation or something like that, and somebody wants to take your test on whether that was a valid vote on something like that. And if, if we don't have it in our procedures, then there could be issues there. So I think if we're going to do that, then let's, let's talk about how we're gonna do it, and what, what the limiting circumstances are, and put it down in black and white, and pass it as an ordinance, a resolution at least.
I just, just wondering, I just didn't know exactly where that fell in the legal territory, so I appreciate that.
Well, I don't, I don't think anyone's suggesting to do like a phone-in for like a council meeting. I think it's more of a work session, but at least is how I kind of understood it. Because to me, and I wouldn't suggest this either, was to have like a dial-in for like a council meeting, but like a work session though, if someone were out of town, and it was an important issue where, you know, if they were out, and they wanted to be able to participate in that, then they would at least have that ability to either Skype in or call in.
And here in the resolution though, it specifically states, "A member of city council may participate in a regular or special meeting or work session of city council by phone, media, or other similar remote means pursuant to the following terms," and then it excludes the various things mentioned earlier. And so I think it'd be a great benefit, there was a chance that I would, I was not going to be in town tonight due to some family things going on. And so that would have been great for me to be able to Skype into this meeting, or, or something along those lines. And so I think it'd be great to pursue it, and I agree with Attorney Barish on that if we do do it, we need to, to outline in black and white exactly what that means.
And I think the, the point that Councilor Martinez just brought up is an additional consideration there, because work sessions are not session where you're making any type of decision. So I think there's a lot more latitude in work sessions, especially how you do those things, than there is in decision-making sessions. So I think we probably need to define that.
Is there anything precluding us from digitally sending work sessions out live, to more than just council having it online if somebody wanted to watch?
You know, there's a, I mean, you could technically, I mean, if we're videotaping our stuff now, I mean, I, I agree with you. I don't see why we couldn't set up something where like they have it like at a hangout, or like some of the bigger organizations do that, where then they have people that can call in or dial in and comment on, on that also. I mean, I think we've already made the push to be more technologically advanced, I don't see why we couldn't do that for the work sessions either. I mean, it's a pretty simple...
It'd probably be through Google Hangouts, that's a pretty good environment that could do basically all of that.
I think that we might look, be progressive, and we have to look into the future. And that's realistically where our future is going, is more digital, and so. I see it being an issue right now, I mean, we almost always have a passion for every meeting, but in the future, and we have to be prepared, and we can't let it catch up to us to the point where we have a plan for it, so we need to do a plan.
I just have a sidebar with brain, and as Councilor Martinez indicated, you know, Google Hangouts could work for that. So that'd be something we could explore right now when we're recording the meetings, and then they're posted on YouTube afterwards. But certainly putting them out live doesn't sound like it poses a lot of difficulty.
No, I think there's a way that you can actually, whoever, you know, if Rhonda's there or not, then you can have her moderate. Like, so at least how I've seen it done is where some people will type in their questions, and then whoever's doing that will then ask those questions, and then that way you can keep some sort of order with that too, and then still bring their discussion to the actual discussion of what's going on. I think it's a good idea.
Well, and when Mayor Fisher did not put it because of her foot, I think that would have been an excellent avenue, instead of you having to come in to do something remotely, just until you got better. And I think it would have been beneficial instead of having it out in the back. So on the other hand, it was good to get it out of jail. He's gonna watch this, we've been called to jail, right?
You sit in front of the same four walls, because it's easier just to watch those four walls than move.
Let's make sure in the resolution there's something precluding doing this from jail.
If you're in jail, that's...
We'll make a note of that, Counselor.
But they're not in the city council.
No, no, they're not.
The only other thing I have for is, can we contact the school board? I ran into one of the school board members at Stampede, and they had agreed that we should try to set up our normal meeting, or get, try to get back on our normal meeting schedule again with them.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, you know, we kind of ran into the summer thing, but, yeah, I would anticipate that we restart that. Can't think what the calendar looks like, but the first, the second week is September?
First Wednesday in September is September 7th.
Okay. We'll send out a notice for that and get that going again.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the course?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have much tonight, other than Stampede was pretty quiet, that was the most part. As that one beat the roll of Ryan's strike, compared to one brutality. State Patrol assisted us on that. Other than that, we just kept it normal, except for Stampede. We didn't have any arguments, and just asked a little bit, other than that, it was pretty quiet, but that was the part. What's that?
Tip before term end.
Yeah.
I thought it was fairly quiet, I didn't hear much of, and you know, you heard the sirens and stuff and everything, but didn't hear any, any, any paps, and maybe there was some baseball games, or...
And, you know, for the, for the concert ring is probably the biggest that it's ever been. There were, I didn't see, I, I were there, taking the, the tickets at the door, and there were no issues, and that's really awesome. And what a crowd of 3,000 or 4,000 people.
I heard we had like 3,600 free cell people, there's no people back if you gave.
The dance was the most packed that night that I've ever seen it, and it seemed very quiet, so.
If that is, I would be, maybe the comments, that's great. Very good, good job.
Madam Mayor, if I could interject, Jackie Angelson, it seems to be my pattern tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Cordy Baker, she is our new HR coordinator. She is our new HR coordinator. She's been on board here for...
Two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks. And, you know, Steph stayed on and kind of got her up to speed. And now she's flying solo and she's doing a great job.
Welcome, welcome. Jeanne?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I sent you, probably about a week ago, a memo on our upcoming meeting on marijuana and just some considerations for you as we approach that meeting. If there's not, if it's not well attended, it will be the first one I have ever seen that's not well attended. So I think you can expect some lively discussion on that subject. And those are just some things, perhaps, that might be considerations for you as you approach that. Yesterday, Forrest and I met with Alan Davie. And the subject was mapping. We talked about the necessity to update our maps. And Alan was able to provide overlays that would include the manholes and water lines and sewer lines and things like this. We were principally interested in mapping from the standpoint of annexation and what he could do there. Some of the maps we have, the present boundaries of the city are not correctly drawn on, such as the, the map that Mike has presented to us, even though that's valuable for the ditches and things like that and the wells and so forth. It doesn't include all the annexed areas. So Alan is going to present several possibilities and it's a good time to think about that now that you're going into the budget cycle. He's talking about costs that may go between $5,000 and $10,000 when all the mapping is done. These are important tools for the Planning Commission, for the Urban Renewal Authority, and for the council. So we look forward to getting those proposals in.
And also within those proposals will be some mapping of water and sewer lines. Yes, Rob? So that was discussed. And, and we do have some preliminary mapping on that that would work into the proposals. So we asked to add, have that added. Obviously, as we continue with our sewer program that we're working on, a wastewater program, and then our water line replacement program, these things, these maps will become very useful. And the style that we're looking at would then plug into GIS-type mapping, which down the road, not next year necessarily, but down the road, would allow things like when the Public Works crew is out working on a water line break, they can locate it with GPS exactly where they're doing the work, write in, you know, take photos and write in exactly what they did to fix it. And then that stays in the master mapping system. So six months later, they're 20 feet down the line. They go, oh, well, here's a second repair here. And it's the same problem, we got to replace this whole length of line. And it creates a good record database for both our water and sewer departments to move forward and have a, a good living record of the work that's being done. So there'll be pieces and parts of this, you all get to see the proposals. And I can hope that we start on this. Another point that we might add is a couple of master survey points. You know, right now, when they do the surveying, they're using old survey points to go from, you know, bury X from Y. And you could actually set up a GIS GPS coordinate that the surveyors, when they come to town, as things are growing and being surveyed, that they're based on that master point and get very accurate mapping, which I think will be useful as well. I'm excited about that.
So we've had some cases in municipal court on junk cars and nuisance type violations that we're processing. And down that same line, I've met with Angela, who's a new code enforcement officer. And she has had several conversations with Mr. Shank. And we were starting a process there. You have to understand that when you have a, she feels that she's a temporary officer in there and that she will only be in there in that position for a limited period of time. So when you're changing code enforcement officers, it necessarily impacts how fast we're able to progress with all that. But we will stay on that. And I anticipate that this is kind of the start of what we're going to have to do. And I have no doubt that we will, with this individual, we will be in litigation for compliance, as we always have been. So that process, Councilor Schrader, you asked about that last time, so I'm just going to bring you up to date with how that's moving on. We, I today had a conference with Sergeant Rodriguez and I sent you a memo, which hopefully you received by now, about that and that situation. So that tells you where that is. I have a correction special warranty deed on the clinic property. When the county assessor sent us the information about the lots, it was, he had a mistake on the lot numbers. And he had 27 through 33. It should have been lots 26 through 32. So we've corrected that. If you will execute that by the mayor, then I will go ahead and normalize that and get that into the county assessor, or get it into the parking recorder.
So when we gave the Kennedy Clinic back their property, that, that erratic legal description had survived three different transactions. And Jean staff actually was able to locate that it had been wrong for at least three iterations. So that was a good catch. Interesting, no? And that is all I have.
Any questions, Brady?
Well, you indicated that Angela feels she's not the permanent ordinance officer. Does that mean Tomas will be coming back?
I don't think so. Yeah, Mayor Procham, I, I believe that, you know, Tomas's condition, while it may be improving, not sure if he'll be able to make it back. You know, I met with him last week and things are still pretty rough for him. So I don't know if he'll be able to come back or not. The appointment to the code enforcement officer position that we made with Officer Bonemire was for 90 days. And that was to fill a gap there to see if Mr. Masiis could return the service to the city. But if he doesn't, you know, I don't think she anticipated that that would be her career trajectory. So we will probably, you know, she'll carry forward for that period. And then we'll, at that point, we'll, we'll most likely have a new police chief and we'll, we'll engage the chief in hiring, because that is a police department employee, in hiring somebody to fill that position.
And then she'll return to the front desk?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
As far as you know?
I'll kind of go along the lines of what Mayor Procham traders talking about. And I know you guys are extremely busy. And, but would it maybe help some of that if, once in a while, an officer also was in some ordinance citations just to kind of show that it doesn't have to come from an ordinance officer, that it's across the board? I mean, I know like even Rob's guys call in stuff when they see stuff. And, you know, we kind of all just work together and help each other out. And, I mean, I, I would even feel, personally, I'd be okay with allowing the public works guys to, you know? I mean, but do you know, does that make sense for a procham that? You know, you don't have people saying, oh, look, Tomas is off today, so it's golden today.
No, I have historically received tickets from various officers. Not just the ordinance enforcement with all of them. One was a shorthand in front and behind, that's the one. But what typically happens is you'll have an officer that will see a violation, but because, and I hate to say this, but because he's busy with other things, he will pass it on, that he assists with the initial report and follow-up. So it is, it is a rude effort. And I have received tickets from all of them. So they, they do participate in it. It's just when you have someone that's designated for that, they do kind of hand them and go, here, this is yours.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking that.
That's good.
You know, when we did the training, Madam Mayor, on the code enforcement, we talked about this issue that, you know, the, it's not only code enforcement officers that are out there, but the police often are out there and see these violations themselves. So it's, it's a communication issue, too, all the time, never stops, really, because they go into places that they see violations while they're seeing criminal violations also. Quite often, you've got criminal violations coupled with code violations. And so the, the communication level has to be kind of kept at a high point between code enforcement and the rest of the PD there. And I think if we do that and everybody's looking at this thing, it's, it's real helpful to stay on top of it.
Any other questions, Brady?
So Madam Mayor, if I can intercheck one more time. All right. So the only piece of paper that you had on the DS this evening was a letter from Azrel regarding two potential community meetings. You know, and as you might recall, Azrel's been working on direct outreach to businesses in the community with our Economic Development Assistance Plan and other communications with them. And she's also been working with Jeff Owsley with the Small Business Development Center. And so what we've done is scheduled for Monday, September 12th, two events. And Azrel basically ram-rotted this. That we'll have a advertising marketing seminar called Marketing Crash Course, subtitled Increase Your Sales. That'll be at 4:00 on the 12th. And that was Mr. Owsley's recommendation for the timing of that. And then at 6:00 PM on that same day, we would also have a public meeting to discuss our new economic development assistance policy. So based on the contacts she's been making, and then we'll also do a directed mail with the assistance of the clerk to our licensed businesses that have premises in the city and try to get as many people to come and hear about that policy. We do have some businesses that she has interest from in participating in the policy. And, you know, kind of thought process there, too, is the council's been wanting to have some outreach to the business community. And I think that, that these two meetings provide an opportunity for that as well.
I was getting to you next, you weren't going to escape. Since we didn't have Stafford first, I was going to nail you and obviously...
Sorry.
No, that's good. Actually, Marion and I were eating last night at Nino's and Jim and Raina and Asher from Southern caught it on the computer. We're very complimentary, I mean, and very impressed.
Thank you. And if I may just add one more thing, Brandon's been a true rock star. And today he gave me the official data he will be recording that seminar. So we'll have it available on our YouTube for business owners who can't attend that day.
Oh, nice. Yeah, make sure we update that.
I was kind of wondering if we'd be able to invite the owner of SLB Auto and maybe have him come down and talk a little bit about, at, at this meeting, say the, the 6:00 PM meeting, have him talk about how the assistance policy has helped him. Because I know that's a pretty big success story. So I just wondered if that'd be possible.
And with that, I actually met with, I actually did an, his last name, Matt, today. Excuse the informality. And I had a meeting earlier with him today. He got caught up with the brainstorm, but I'm working on getting a paper interview with him. And also, we're going to do an interview that's videotaped again so we can have it and then we can keep it running on as for publicity. So he's very willing to help us in the advertising aspect of it. Unfortunately, as of right now with Stampede and everything, he's just going to back up on the work. So it's been kind of hard catching him, but he's more than willing to help. So he'll definitely receive an invitation for that meeting, though.
Well, I have one. Good job.
Thank you.
And that will be here at City Hall?
Yes.
Official reports, you may. Bet you survived Stampede.
It was actually, I did not receive a single call through the entire committee. First time since I've been here. It's a little scary class.
And I had a compliment for Dilly in your department, Marco Alexander. Dilly had told her a week ago that he would be back to trim her tree. And he showed up and she apparently didn't realize he was out in front of her house. And we were over there last night and she walked to the curb with it. Oh, Dilly was here and trimmed my tree, oh, I'm so happy!
I will make sure I pass that on to you.
Rhonda? The work session, I love this to the marijuana. I have phone calls, I have visitors. It will be a chaos. So I'm just being prepared. We also have a decrease in vendors for Stampede compared to other years. Not quite sure what's going on, but it seemed like everybody was happy, so that's all good. And Redtail Drive. Yeah, that's what I said when I heard what came across my desk. They're going to start building directly south of the Big Art, putting up homes. So I got the first inquiry asked addressing and they're going to start breaking ground. Now, I don't have a date yet. I know I gave them, you look surprised? No, I gave them...
There, there is a latent, there is a latent issue with that property. Not with the addressing, all that's fine. I've been unable to determine to date whether the public improvements in that subdivision have been dedicated to the city. The water line and the sewer line that would service that residential structure are located in Redtail Drive. And, you know, I haven't had a lot of time to work on this, but it is an issue that we're trying to resolve, whether or not Redtail Drive, as a street, was dedicated to the city and the improvements, i.e. water, sewer, fire hydrants, all that stuff. Not sure the outcome of that. And I need to, hopefully, at this point, get up there next week and see if we can, we need to get with the people that own it and see their title commitment. But I'm not as sure, looking at the assessor's data, that that dedication ever occurred. Currently, it shows that it's still, that the street is still owned by Mr. Taze and his partners. So if that's the case, that's something that'll have to get resolved before the city can provide water and sewer. Because technically, if that didn't occur, those water and sewer lines are not the city's. And we'll have to try to figure that out. So it is a bit of an issue. It obviously didn't come up when the property was sold to them. I discussed it with their Realtor, who said, yeah, that'll happen. But I don't find that in the county records. And I think we're actually going to have to go to the courthouse. We'll do it next week at this point and see if we could resolve that. It's pretty unusual, but if you pull up the, the property map, there's the streets and the little cul-de-sacs and they all show those, but they're not in the public ownership.
And when we did do this property way back when, when we annexed it, we had several public hearings and several filings on it. So it's probably there someplace. And I can look in the files if we have that here just to check.
If you would, that'd be great. Because it's mysterious that it shows that way in the county records at this point. It's really unusual. So if you could do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely.
Rhonda, and then necessarily go up to the county and see if we can get it hammered out. I did send CJ up there with the assessors and they kind of gave me the same information that I had. So if, if Rhonda can't, you know, doesn't find that, I hope she does, then we'll actually have to go up and go into the clerk's office and give up the plot maps and see what happened there.
Can I ask a question? Do you know if they're going to go ahead and allow them with that issue to go ahead and start building?
I'm not sure the county is aware of the issue, the county building department.
My concern is that water line has not been used for several years. So we need to go in there before they... So we need to go in there before they actually start doing building and stuff to make sure we flush that through the well. If that's, because you were trying to say a date that they're gonna start on?
I don't have a date yet, but it's Code of Urban Housing, that's purchased property and the same stuff building on it. So I can go a little Janet, a better date for you.
That'd be great if you give me the contact information as well, we can try to track this down. But it is, if it wasn't conveyed, there's an issue there. And in order to go in and flush the lines and everything, we have to have legal access, which is not evident at this time.
What kind of housing are they going to be putting up?
It's a single family dwelling. I think, you know, they have a, I don't know if it's partially self-help.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so a self-help housing unit, which is appropriate under the zoning.
Very similar to what we have on South 67.
This'll shoot.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Just ended the graduation ceremony for our Citizens Academy and it was great to see those citizens, not only that finished the academy, but were very enthusiastic about it and very happy. They even got one member who had not previously driven or had her license to be able to drive, which is awesome. And I think it just shows the dedication of our neighborhood watch and that they're willing to do that. I hope that we can continue that.
It was, it was fun when they rounded it too. I mean, a lot of officers have different expertise and interests, so they got to teach that portion of it. But that got to engage with different citizens. And the citizens have the right alarms, so they kind of get to do the other end of it too and hope they can pass the word on. So I hope it continues to grow and hopefully has more.
I think the first one's probably the hardest because now you have all these people who have such positive experiences out there giving all this good word of mouth.
Yeah, I mean, you can think of other things you can add or tweak a little bit. Good job.
So that was good and did a little barbecue while the wind held out. And it was, everybody thinks that they're coming up to that. And then just Stampede, I thought went really, really well. I think it was really well organized. I think we got probably the most votes we've had in a long time at, at the parade. And I thought it was really good, really great attendance during the dance and the concert and hardly any incidents. So I thought it was overall a big success.
Stampede was absolutely awesome. Gotta give a huge shout out to Public Works Recreation Department. They did a great job at that. Police, police department did an outstanding job. The presence was definitely felt and I thought the law and order was very well maintained. So all around a great job. And considering the fact that the city triples in size for one week in a year, it's, it was very well done. So I thought that was great. It's pretty much all that.
I would echo what Madam Jill said and it's an amazing job getting the town ready and keeping it safe. Mayor Big Watch, citizens graduation was very nice, very positive. We do have hot dogs left over for Citizens in Town Open House and so we're ready to barbecue them too.
It's good.
And maybe I'll just go to be shortened. Anything else to come for the house? Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402 for F and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of City Council or for any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of the City Council or of an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees.
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll take, what do you need to go on? Rhonda? Sorry. Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Counselor Lawrence?
Aye.
Counselor Shagwell?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
We'll take the short little recess and come back in five minutes.